All right, at seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the regular council meeting of Monday, July 21st, 2025, the word at 7:00 PM. You guys for the invocation and the questions?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have of serving you. We pray that you give us the wisdom and guidance that we need to continue to be with us, help us to get things done in a good and efficient manner, and continue to help us to follow what your leading order, where we ask you things that Jesus may. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord. We have the liberty and access for all.
Counsel, do we entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries. Counsel, do we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting executive session of July 7th, 2025?
No, not me, but the minutes and will be executive session.
Second. Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries. All right, uh, moving on to nominations for recognition. Does the council have any nominations for recognition?
Yeah, for the member of the summer classic, uh, classic summer drag. The effort and everything they put together and all that was and except. Because I'd expect him with the statement and everything. But they did put a lot of work in trying to bring something to happen. A lot of things going on also. So I, you know, give them up. Kind of a paddle back first.
Yeah, that's a good one. And I was gonna, I was gonna nominate them too. They, uh-
Sandy Martin, that's that one, yeah.
Yeah, they, um, I mean, Friday didn't quite have the greatest turnout with them. Uh, the drag was really a lot of fun. We seem to get a lot of people down there on Saturday, so that was a good one. So, in that spirit, I also wanted to nominate Campbell County Health Services for, um, our Campbell County Health EMS service for providing another ambulance. Um, you weren't prompted to do so, but you guys saw a need and, and, uh, and brought an ambulance for us just in case, so we appreciate that. Um, there's also Newcastle Country Club. They provided, uh, they donated meals for all of the support personnel. Uh, so I thought that was pretty fantastic that they, they fed all the folks from search and rescue that were in, and all the support staff for the summer drag. And then there's also, uh, Weston County Search and Rescue. Uh, they were the lion chair of providing security and, and, uh, services. Kind of, and one of the, uh, the girls that used, uh, she's on search and rescue. She used to, uh, work at the city shop. She was handing out meals and, um, it was just a lot of really good support. Uh, and then we also had, uh, Tony One Electric. Um, Josh Leggett provided some of his, um, equipment and, um, and himself to, uh, help remove the caterails and everything, um, and all the concrete engineers. So, uh, yeah. Um, so I, I thought they needed to be recognized. Then, um, Shannon Crabtree is actually on the board, uh, but he also provided some equipment and, uh, um, but I, I think we'll, he'll get recognized as part of the board, so, uh, but-
Is that him or Paul?
Uh, the classic summer drag sport.
How about our, our own Greg Stumm? There's one magnificent crew who did all the blocking of streets and did it all correctly, and we want to mention them a thing too.
Yeah, so Greg and I talked about that earlier today, and he said maybe if we waited till the end of the summer, that we could just get them with a wider net and then kind of recognize them once.
That sounds appropriate.
Everything. So, um, that's all I have unless anybody else has an other recognition. No more nominations for recognition? Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, um, certificate recognition. Um, the old school reunion board couldn't be present tonight, so we'll get the, uh, their certificate of recognition, um, to them. And then I also have one for Ann Hawley and Don Stevenson for, uh, your work volunteering to, to clean the place off before the, uh, the, uh, well, we don't just give them to you where you said. I, I, uh, thank you, Ann.
Thanks.
Appreciate you, and thank you for, for volunteering and cleaning things up. And I had the old school re-
And I just want to make a statement that I don't think any of us do things to recognize, we do things to help, uh, whatever we do, I think is-
Yeah, and in that spirit, I just like to recognize people that's always here.
Yes, that's nice, thank you.
Because I think it's leading from the front, and it's an important thing to do for our community. Uh, moving on to citizens' business verbal, which there is none, on to citizens' business in writing. Um, from Linda Hunt, "The undeveloped block of Sage Street and trees of brush in intersection." To the city of Newcastle, regarding undeveloped block of Sage Street. Number one specifically, the second block of Sage Street is undeveloped. Typically, the streets in Newcastle are 50 feet wide from boundary to boundary. Every summer, it is necessary for a resident or residence of Gray Edition to request that the city of Newcastle mow and groom this area from boundary to boundary. The weeds there grow taller than the average human. The weeds mature and seed the entire area. Then they spread all over the area to include Gray Edition, housing, and property west of Duff Avenue. The open area at the back of the school, the private pasture north and parallel to Sage Street, many of the weeds are listed as invasive by the state of Wyoming and are supposed to be controlled and eradicated. Russian olive trees are included in Wyoming's invasive species. They should not be planted and/or their growth encouraged. Also, on the boundaries of this block of Sage Street, past contractors have left large chunks of trees, trunks and debris, as well as leftover globs of concrete in the drainage that goes along Sage Street and dumps into the culvert under the bike path. Those things should be removed from the drainage slash street. Number two specifically, the bike path parallel to Duff Avenue and the drainage ditch between the bike path and Duff Avenue to mow, weed, and groom by the city of Newcastle. Number three specifically, to mow, weed, spray, and control that area between the chain link fence at the back of the old school and the alley parallel to that fence. It generally appears that these areas are completely forgotten by the city each summer. Thank you for your time and consideration in this manner, or matter, excuse me. Uh, sincerely, Linda Hunt.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Excuse me. Uh, sincerely, Linda Hunt. Will you, uh, look into that and follow up?
Yeah, the contractors have done. You still got materials sitting there on Sage Street. Makes it very difficult to mow when you, when you've got gravel idols in different areas. Um, probably the school, actually, the adjacent property nurse is responsible for mowing the alleys. So it's technically up to the school district. Um, we removed all trees on Sage Street to counter the search. There is nothing left. All the recalls are taken out. Everything's, apparently it's cleared out. Um, when they went in to do that project, put the server on, and they haven't removed the trees anymore. So they've been, they've been gone since, uh, early, early summer. Um, we do have plans to mow, which is a matter of getting to it. We have to finish a lot of them. We've got the lot on, uh, West Wal, or East, East Walcott to mow. We've got parts portions of the cemetery outside of regular cemetery to mow. Um, Morrissey Road leaves it, I mean, it's, it's not just the one spot. We have several. And if it's near me, if possible, we will mow all things. Just need a person to put it.
The only thing I'm gonna say about that money, I'm gonna worry about the school, because school will be starting, and they do lock on that money, so.
And if we have time and personnel to live, and things, we can't take care of it, but unless we don't, like right now, everybody was tied up all last week on leaks and sewers and then grabbing for the buses and crowds. So we're rid of those, anybody, uh, to do, except the parks. Trees in the next letter, they've been addressed. The arborist and I looked at that, oh, three weeks ago, and decided what to do with them. Maybe it was just a matter of, again, giving them time.
Okay, sorry, well, that I missed one. We're kind of pushing up on the backside of our, uh, it says approximately 7:15, is it already, if I can run this with budget here? Okay, so, uh, we'll, we'll address, uh, Linda Hunt's second letter, uh, business in writing as soon as we're done with the budget amendment hearing that was supposed to take place approximately at 7:15 PM. So, uh, notice of budget amendment. Uh, notice is hereby given that the city of, uh, oh, we need to prove it first. Oh, hey, uh, do we have a motion to approve the notice of budget amendment?
I'm hoping we approve the notice of budget amendment.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
I do.
All right, so now go ahead and read it. Thank you. Uh, notice of budget amendment. Notice is hereby given that the city of council of the city of Newcastle, Wyoming, has amended the city budget for this full year, 2024 through 2025, in the following particulars. Increase the garbage fund budget by $150,000 by budgeting $150,000 from garbage fund revenues. The monies will be used for Melantio Number One Closure, DQ escrow account. Notice is further given that this matter was considered enacted upon by the city of Newcastle, uh, Wyoming at approximately 7:15 PM at the regular meeting held at 7:00 PM on July 21st, 2025, in City Owl at 10 West Warwick, Newcastle, Wyoming. All right. Thank you. And I think we have one more minute, and we have a guest coming, so we'll just jump back to, uh, Linda's second letter as soon as we get done meeting with, uh, with Joan Evans, with the Wyoming Government Investment Fund. Can you hear us, Joan?
Hello?
Oh, I don't know if we have any sound, Joan. One second. You can hear me? All right, there you go.
Hit that X, do you, go over, right there, hit that X, yeah.
There you go. Now try to say something, Joan.
Are you not hearing? He's not hearing you, man.
Joan, can you hear us?
You can hear me, it's a little bit far, so I'm, I'm-
Oh, we can hear you loud and clear. Hey, Joan, it's just you and me now. All right. Uh, we're, we're all sitting here in, uh, city council chambers in Newcastle, Wyoming, and we're ready to hear about, um, some of your programs.
Great, thank you, Mayor Holmes. Thank you for having me this evening, and it's a pleasure to join you in the council. I'm visiting with you tonight about the Wyoming Government Investment Fund. Uh, the Wyoming Government Investment Fund is a local government investment pool. It is a short-term investment vehicle that specifically is designed for property activities. It allows you to pool your funds, uh, to invest in securities per state, law and state code, uh, offering you a way to, uh, pool your money to potentially earn a higher yield than you would if you individually invested your funds. So my name is Joan Evans, I'm the director with PFM Asset Management. I live in Cheyenne, Wyoming. And PFM Asset Management is the administrator, investment advisor, and market agent for the Wyoming Government Investment Fund. We are hired by the fund's board of trustees to, uh, invest the funds, keep them safe, and report help back out to you as the investors. So I'm going to shorten the slide program to go away with you to tell you a little bit while the fun, I'll keep it brief, I know we don't have a lot of time this evening. Do you all have the rate sheet in mind, you?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks for tagging, make sure that we got these.
Great, wonderful. So when I'm talking about the different programs, you'll be able to kind of reference the rate sheet as we're talking, and then I'll leave plenty of time for questions as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and bring the presentation here, I'm gonna share my screen. All right, great. I talked a little bit, I introduced myself, talked a little bit about, uh, the program, but I think one thing that's important to note is the Wyoming Government Investment Fund is the only state program that is sponsored by the School Boards Association and Wyoming Association of Municipalities. We provide three different investing options. This fund has been in existence since 1996. Uh, we are structured to be compliant with GASP, which is the Government Standards Accounting Board, so we're complying with GASP 79 guidelines, and I think that's really important, we'll talk about mine here in a moment. But we have three investment options, so liquid asset series, so that you can see that on your rate sheet there, kind of in the top left box where it says seven-day yield. This is similar to, uh, money market fund at a Alba or another FDIC that you might be investing in. Just a little side note, I'm hearing some feedback, are you hearing it as well?
No. No.
Okay, then I'll just keep going. So we have our liquid asset series, which means all of your money will be available to you at any time.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donut. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
So we have our liquid asset series, which means all of your money will be available to you at any time. We have a term program where you can match a maturity to a fixed rate. Those are, those rates are over on the right-hand side of the page in the large box. These maturities go up anywhere from 60 days to one year. And then we also have an FDIC insured CDs program. Uh, those are for smaller amounts, those are passed out into $250,000 amounts because of the FDIC insurance, and you can see the rates there right under the liquid fund rate. All these options can work together towards your goal of meeting your liquidity needs and your longer-term cash flow needs as well. Specifically, the liquid asset series is really ideal for your operating funds. It can be for reserve funds too, but other options with term and the FDIC insured CDs may provide for a higher rate depending on the rate environment, and also bond proceeds if you have the deboration bonds. But again, I mentioned that all of these investments are designed to adhere to GASP, to Wyoming statutes, and GASP 79. This is designed to be a fund where you can always access your, your cash. And so GASP requires us to keep 10% of the overall fund in overnight liquidity and 30% in seven-day liquidity. Not all, not all local government investment pools do that. And just for a point of reference, we have just under $1.2 billion in liquid funds in the pool right now. The pool is AAA rated by Standard and Poor's, which means all of the securities within the pool are AAA rated by high-grade quality, so we're talking about US Treasuries, commercial paper. And again, your funds are pooled with all the other entities that are participants in the fund. So you put a dollar in, our objective is to maintain the stable net asset value, you take that dollar out, plus your interest that you have around during the time your money has been held. Interest is calculated daily, credited monthly, and our weighted average maturity of the fund cannot exceed 60 days. Again, the investments that we're making into those Treasuries, commercial paper are very short-term in nature. If you want to be interested in our program called Term, this is a minimum investment of $500,000. Again, you're locking in a rate, so you're saying, hey, we have some funds that we know we won't need for 90 days, so we're going to lock in a 90-day rate, and you can see that good qualifying rate there on your sheet, and you know that when your investment matures, you'll have that, uh, interest credited to you. This is really ideal for non-revenues and non-expenders when you know you won't need those funds for a particular amount of time. Some entities have a hard time meeting that $500,000 threshold that I mentioned, so our certificates of deposit program is more suitable. We're applying those FDIC insured CDs for you. Again, this is ideal for equity that you might have. The minimum investment here is $95,000, we can go anywhere from 90 days out to five years. We hardly ever have anyone go over one year for the CD program, I won't look that. All of our, all of our rates are net of fees, so you don't pay fees to participate in any of these funds. The rates that we publish are the rates that you're actually going to be earning. So when you have that, this is when the fund offers you, you know, an array of management tools, an array of programs. Um, you have myself as a resource here as a leadership manager in the state. Uh, we have a very deep bench of portfolio managers, uh, client services representatives that can help you manage your online portal if you're having trouble. And then we offer access to educational content and market updates and kind of thought leadership on the financial market periodically to you. This is a slide that talks more specifically about GASP, I just kind of went over that, but, um, the GASP 79 criteria applies to, uh, to our liquidity requirements, I mentioned that, to the credit quality, the portfolio, to the days that we can have the portfolio matured now too. So all of this compliance helps us maintain that stable $1 net, um, net asset value per share in the pool. So why did you choose the Wyoming Government Investment Fund? This fund is exclusively designed to serve Wyoming political subdivisions, Wyoming, Wyoming public entities. You could be a, a special district, a city, a town, a community college, the University of Wyoming, they have counties, we have special districts, we have irrigation districts. Uh, this is owned and operated by the participants, we have a board of directors that are made up of entities that participate in the pool. They make the decisions about, um, who, you know, who invests the money, uh, who, who talks to you about the fund, all of those things that board director means four times, board, board directors means four times a year. We have a hand meeting of the participants that any, um, fund that participates in the fund is willing to participate in this every year in November. We have our offline portal called Connect, so your, um, um, your staff there at the city, Stacy, she could have access to the portal, she could maintain, um, um, the record-keeping, write inside statements, report out on activity in the fund at any, anytime. That portal is accessible 24/7. You can even have a direct investment of, of aid coming from the state or the counties if that applies to you. And, um, we have professional management of this fund by PFM Asset Management, and our focus is on safety, liquidity, and yield. Again, the fund has been in existence since 1996. So PFM Asset Management, um, has an office in Cheyenne, and I, that's who I work for. We are a leader in the local government investment pool space. So as you can see here on this map, everywhere where you see a dark blue, a state building, this is the state where we operate a pool, like the Wyoming Government Investment Fund, so they call that out, it's called Colorado Statewide Investment Program. It's specifically only for Colorado entities. It, um, is operated under the provisions of Colorado State Law. So just like Wyoming is operated under the provisions for investing under Wyoming State Law, that's the same of all of these different pools. The money from all of the variety of pools is not coming together, generally is only coming with the Wyoming public entities. So we have over $81 billion of our assets under management between all these pools and over 6,000 participants. Some other services that we offer, we do offer separate account management for entities who have larger amounts that would like their portfolios managed separately, and if you issue bonds, we're able to, um, help you with your bond proceeds and your arbitrage leaving, all of those types of things. So if you pause there, um, and ask if you have any questions so far, the only thing that is requiring you to participate in the fund, again, I mentioned there are no fees, uh, you just have to pass a resolution that says that your council has agreed to let the, the city participate. Once that's applied, we can work with, um, the treasurer, the mayor, to go ahead and get the fund set up. We don't have a minimum requirement or a deposit. If you haven't had any activity, um, in your fund for one year and have a zero balance, then we can put your account in active status, but other than that, we don't have any minimum balance requirements. So pause there, mayor, have some any questions I can answer for you?
Wow. Any questions from the council?
If there's no fees for, for us, who find answers on this?
Did you catch that, Joe?
No, I didn't.
Okay, he said that one. If there's no fees for us, then, um, how, how is this being for?
Okay, so the, the fees are, um, there are fees, uh, but the fee, the, um, the fund has an information statement, and I would encourage you to produce that, it is on our website at wgiaw.com. and I would encourage you to produce that, it is on our website at wgiaw.org and it explains the fee structure for the fund. The fees cannot exceed thirty basis points and so that includes the funds to pay for the services of the investment advisor, the administrator, you know, all the auditing, all of the fees of the fund, but those are capped at thirty basis points. So that is what we call our gross fee. So let's just say that today we're publishing a rate of four point five oh, the gross fee would be maybe four point, maybe four point five, but it might be four point four eight or, you know, depending on what the expense ratio that we have going on for the fund right now. But those, that's taken off of the top of the rate and so what we publish is a net rate to investor. But those, that's taken off of the top of the rate and so what we publish is a net rate to investor.
May I ask you a question? So I got to meet Joan at the Wyoming Association and Municipalities Convention and she gave me her card. I came back and presented to you guys that I had met Joan and that she could help us with investing our funds. Since I've been on the council, you know, I've only recently become aware that we have some wild star investments. But I don't, I feel like the city should move forward with working with Joan and actually putting some of our money to work because we can actually use the interest that we accrue to further some of our projects in town. I feel myself that it's better than just leaving it in an account, if we could actually get it to work for us. And there's, there's a lot of, with investing in government funds, I'm trying to understand and correct me if I'm wrong, Joan, we have to be really safe with public's money. So we're not out gambling on really high yield investments, we're trying to lock in a nice fixed interest that, you know, after ninety days, we can profit from. And then when I was talking to Stacy earlier, we can amend our budget and actually use those profits to, you know, do things with. And I think it just makes sense.
I think we need to know how much money we have to invest.
Well, so that was another good one, Tom, is Joan and her staff can help us kind of come up with a strategy, you know, that will benefit the city. So look at what we have, work with Stacy and then come up with an investment strategy that benefits us.
Hey, Ron, so I will mention that we do offer cash flow analysis as part of our assistance to you. And so that's one thing that I could work with Stacy on, just to kind of look at how your cash flows month to month and then that would help you determine if you could possibly, you know, do some maturities out sixty, ninety, a hundred days, especially when we're seeing rates out longer on the curve being higher right now. So you're being rewarded for putting your money out a little bit for that overnight rate. And as I explained to Mayor Owens and Stacy earlier today, that seven day yield is tied to the Fed funds overnight rate. So, you know, when we think back over the last decade, there've been at least a couple of times where we've been really in a near zero rate interest rate environment. So there's been times where the rate that the Wyoming Government Investment Fund has been point one oh. So not four point one oh, point one oh, that's depending on what's going on in the economy. So, you know, it's important to keep in mind that, you know, depending on inflation, depending on unemployment, depending on whether the economy's in a recession, you know, all of those factors impact that overnight rate. So right now, we're in a period of time where we've seen that rate remain pretty high. So it's really afforded entities an opportunity to take advantage of that and, you know, have their money in a place that they can earn a little bit more with that money to work. And so that's what, you know, that's what we're going to do is just help you. We only work with government entities, safety's the number one priority, these investments are all done with safety in mind, triple A rated, you know, all of that. So happy to help, we have over a hundred and eighty Wyoming entities that have worked with this fund over the years. So it's really tried and true.
That's great, Joan. Does anybody else have any further questions for Joan?
I can't think of any questions. I think it's a great, I mean, I think it's crazy that we're just not doing, not investing. So I think we all need to read up about this and check it out.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Excellent, I'm getting some positive feedback, I don't know if you heard any of that, Joan, but yeah, some of the comments.
That's good.
They dug it's a, that it's a good idea and that it makes sense.
Yes, and I just want to be sure and communicate that that seven day yield on the liquid fund, you know, it can vary. So right now, it's, you know, it's very dry, I feel like it's attractive, but it will have a flow based on what's going on with the economy. You know, right now, we're hearing is the Fed, the market is pricing in maybe one and a half to two cuts for the Fed by the year end and one happens twenty-five basis points. So, you know, rates could go down twenty-five basis points, it could go down fifty basis points by the end of the year, or it might not. You know, the Fed bases their decision on their dual mandate, looking at inflation, looking at unemployment and determining what's going on in the economy. But right now, even if you're seeing an opportunity and you just want to make sure that you understand that it could be more, it could be less, it's just really dependent on that overnight rate.
Understood. Well, thanks so much, Joan. We might revisit this at the next council meeting and see if the council's amicable with passing a resolution or with your organization.
Sounds great. I do look forward to the opportunity to work with you. If any of your questions come up, don't hesitate to contact me.
For sure. Thank you so much, Joan. Thank you for visiting.
Yeah, I'm really being helpful. Bye.
Bye. So one of the things that came up earlier today about the Wyoming Group Investment Fund or Governor Investment Fund, excuse me, we could do tangible things for our community with the interest from the money that we're investing. So the money that's just sitting there, if we invest it wisely, we get a return on that investment, we make a budget amendment and we could use that money to, you know, do something, right? Something positive in the community. If we needed something, we need to hurt some. Some of the things that some of other communities that she's worked with, they use some of that interest to actually fund a position. They put enough money back that they were able to, you know, have a part-time position somewhere. I don't remember the example that she gave, do you remember, Stacy?
I don't think that's, that's school board.
Yeah, one of the school boards actually like had funded a position, you know, school week type position. I don't, I don't know if it was a, I thought it was great because, and they were just using money that they already had and they just invested it and they were able to utilize it for a positive function. So I, I thought it was great.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm not familiar with any of this, so on this ninety day maturity thing, throughout October, it says it's going to give us four point five five percent. So if we had a half a million dollars and we stuck in there for ninety days, can we get four point five five percent or do we get, is that based on a year? Is that based on ninety days? Because if it's based on ninety days, what do you make twenty-two thousand dollars in ninety days? But I don't know, most of the time the people give you a whole year, you know? You see what I'm saying?
That's a fair question and I don't have a great answer for you, Tom. I mean, but even if it was like a reduced rate, the fact that we made any money, no money that was just sitting there would be a positive thing.
I just wanted to say we don't have, we are making interest on any money that is something, we do get interest, all of our money.
So we don't get four point five five percent?
No, I'm not on some of it.
There are a lot of different little pockets of money that Stacy's managing and they're all producing some kind of interest.
So are we going to have money like out of one of those pockets and make a work of that or? Right here though, Thomas, it says the current seven day yield also referred to as the current annualized yield. So does that mean that's a year's?
That's our question, Jahaan. When are we going to talk to her again?
Well, if I bring the resolution back and the council is amicable with passing the resolution, then she'll start working with us. And then we can see what advice he has for us. Maybe she could provide some more in-depth explanation because I'm not a top-down investor either, right?
If he got a million dollar grant and we spent it in the bank for ninety days in the real thing and we get a four point five five percent on it, we're cooking gas.
I think that's a novel idea and I guess I was encouraged just by Senator Driscoll's bill that moves this conversation forward. And let's hear some of those ideas. Instead of just saying, oh, one man, one vote, nothing we can do to help you, Weston County. Finally, it seems like the issue's been forced a little bit and I'm encouraged by that at least.
I'm very encouraged by that and I'm encouraged by the fact that the commissioners haven't pulled that resolution that created the constitutional senator and representative for Weston County. I think that that, I think that them not backtracking helps a lot and solidifies that it's not just this handful of people that want Weston County to be represented. And I think that the conversation is going to be really good and I think there's going to be a lot of ideas thrown around.
I mean, don't you think we could do something good with?
It's a brilliant idea, Mr. Mayor, I think, in pursuit of wonderful avenues here.
Okay, well, we'll keep pursuing it and then we'll go ahead and add this to the whole business for the next meeting and then we'll revisit it and see where the council stands. So with that, I'll go ahead and jump back to Citizens Business and Writing, Linda Hardy, City of Newcastle, R E Trees and Brushing Intersection. That was a part of this talk that we were gonna do. So specifically, at the intersection of Highway eighty-five and South Summit, this intersection approaches via South Summit on an arrow. When driving left on South Summit, it is difficult and possible to see what traffic is approaching on Highway eighty-five from the north without pulling all the way up to the edge of Highway eighty-five. Then if a truck, a vehicle with any type of trailer, a large vehicle like motorhomes, UPS and FedEx trucks are on eighty-five and wanting to turn into South Summit West, they can't because the person on South Summit has pulled so far ahead in order to see the oncoming traffic. There are two trees on the road right of way and a lot of brush on the northwest corner of the intersection. It should be removed and sprayed so that it does not simply grow back. There is also a smaller tree a little bit further north in the chain link fence. It should also be removed. At the very least, its winds cut back to make it easier to see oncoming traffic as well. I have also attached the city ordinances and that explains about trees in streets, right of ways, et cetera, and city limits. I really believe this is a safety concern. Thank you for your time and consideration, Miss Manner, or Manner, excuse me. Sincerely, Linda Hardy. Attachments, Newcastle City Ordinance, this is a good issue left notes here so that folks can reference this later with section twenty-two dash twenty-eight and section twenty-two dash twenty-nine. So she did attach the ordinances, but folks can look up the ordinances on their own time and we'll go ahead and, Mr. Stumpf, I think that I saw the arborist over trimming the trees, said trees in the letter. So I think it's kind of drastic.
Yes, the reason they pushed out, they had so many people in the cut down, it wasn't the safety we don't approve it. And they didn't poison the stumps and that's why they all of a sudden become push. The stump's been, everything's been removed and the stump's been.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on. Does anybody have any questions? No, okay, moving on to whole business. Item number one, second reading of ordinance number six, series twenty-two five, remanding section sixteen dash eleven point two. Ordinance number six, twenty-two five, an ordinance amending section sixteen dash eleven point two of the Newcastle Town Code, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Newcastle, Weston County, Wyoming. Section sixteen dash eleven point two be codified into the Newcastle, Wyoming Municipal Code, reading in its entirety as follows. Section sixteen eleven point two, use of engine compression brakes slash jake brakes prohibited. Do I need to read the entire ordinance currently at this point? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance number six, series twenty-two five, on third reading?
I make a motion to approve.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, on second reading, I thought you were over three.
I still make a motion to approve on the second reading.
So we have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? I've been approached about this ordinance a couple of times by the public, some in favor and some opposed, but I think that's how it goes. So here is no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We pass ordinance number six, series twenty-two five, on second reading. Moving on to whole business, item number two, council, I approach you all with American Legal Publishing in regard to looking through our ordinance book and cleaning it up. Then was brought to my attention by Clerk slash Treasurer Haggerty that we already contract with Civic Plus, MUNICO. They have all of our quotes online and they manage it. If it's the council's pleasure, we could move forward with seeing if they would provide us with a quote for the same work. It might be that since they already manage our municipal codes on an online platform that it might be a little bit cheaper. So I didn't know if the council wanted to entertain a motion to move forward with getting a quote from Civic Plus MUNICO.
That's a good idea, I'd move the, move forward and get a quote from the people that are always using the online.
Do we have a second? We have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Go ahead and move on to new business, item number one, Campbell County Health EMS Service Agreement. Campbell County Health EMS Service Agreement. This agreement made and entered into as of this first day of July 2025 between City of Newcastle, Wyoming, here and after referred to as the city, and Campbell County Hospital District, BBA Campbell County Health EMS, here and after referred to as CCH EMS. Witness that, witness that, that whereas CCH EMS provides services to and for the residents of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, and whereas these services benefit the residents of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming. Now therefore, in consideration of the mutual promises and covenants herein, the parties agree as follows. Once the councils had adequate time to look at the service agreement, would we entertain a motion to approve the service agreement with Campbell County Health EMS?
How much did we budget for them?
The amounts, David.
Make a motion that we accept the Campbell County Health EMS Service Agreement for the commencing July 1st, 2025, and then June 30th, 2026, for the $108,681.
Second. We have a motion properly seconded. Is there any discussions? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Shane.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the vote of confidence that you have in Campbell County Health EMS. Listening to, a little bit of a sidebar here, listening to Joan's presentation on the WIGIF funds, I do have a little bit of history with this. Campbell County Health actually several months ago moved the majority of its investment portfolio from YOstar accounts into WIGIF funds because it gave us an ability to utilize our investments a little bit better. So if you're looking for some local history on that or somebody that's hasn't experienced, Campbell County Health has utilized those WIGIF funds appropriately, so.
Thank you for that insight.
This place is full of, you can tell the people that like to be with old people because they really take care of you good and are very kind.
Twice a day, every day, activities, people have organized activity that's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo. We play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here, it's a good place to be.
And then the other thing that I'd like to bring up in the council's notice is that I've presented a couple of times on the EMS Needs Assessment Grant to the state of Wyoming. That work has been approved, the contractor's been chosen, it's a company called Safe Tech Solutions. I'll be in charge of scheduling some interviews between August 6th and August 8th with different members of our entire service area, so all of Sheridan County, Campbell County, Weston County. If there's any interest from the city council, the two interviewers from Safe Tech Solutions would like to meet either in person or via Teams meeting to sit down for a brief 30 to 45-minute meetings to see how things are going and get a good assessment of the services that we're providing. So feel free to reach out to me through my email and I'll happily set this up for you.
Thanks, Shane. Anybody have any further questions for Shane? Hearing on, we'll move on to committee and council member reports. Item number one, Boys and Girls Club. The next step in the puzzle is to move forward with a community readiness and expansion assessment. I met with Tamara Allen, who runs the Double Ases program, and she helped me kind of start into the community readiness and expansion assessment. It just asks questions about how you organize your leadership, determine your needs, and it's a scale of one to five. Tamara thought, you know, based on the structure that they currently have, that she scored some of the spots pretty high. And then she wanted to work on it a little bit more because some of the grants that she'd written in the past actually provided descriptive details for the different parts of community readiness and expansion assessment. I can get copies of this if any of the council would like to look at it.
Can you email that, please?
Okay, yeah. I'll get copies and email them to you guys. It's kind of a rough deal. Her organization here in town, the Double Ases program, is actually in jeopardy of losing some of their funding. So a partnership with Boys and Girls Club might help to, you know, provide them with some extra funding or a model that they could use so they can continue services. But Tamara Allen is a very dedicated person. She works very hard with the kids in our community and it's really kind of sad just some of the home lives of children in our community and losing a program such as hers would be very detrimental. So hopefully...
I was just going to say that she has been a lifesaver to a lot of kids, so.
Yeah.
It's very important.
No, she's fantastic. So anyway, we're going to, I'm going to continue plugging my own list and I'll provide counsel with the assessment so you guys can look at it. Is there any questions? Any questions? Hearing on, we'll go ahead and move on to department head reports. Item number one, Lee's Chief Derek Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item, the calls for service since July 21st, 2025. Newcastle Police Department, 150, heard Councilman Voss's request, a documented how many arrests we've made in that timeframe, which is eight. And then they attached breakdown for the calls for service. One thing I did notice when I was looking at the breakdown of the calls for service, if you notice, there's zero calls for service specific to any kind of drugs on there. There were multiple arrests made for drugs, but they stemmed from traffic stops. So the way the system breaks it down, it's not always 100% clear. So the nature goes in the system as traffic stop, the resulting, or the results of that, when they're drug-related, it doesn't show up on here that way. So if you guys ever have questions on that stuff, don't hesitate to let me know. Weston County Sheriff's Office, 130, Upton Police Department, 44, Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, 4, Weston County Fire Protection District, 9, Upton Volunteer Fire Department, 3, Newcastle Ambulance, 20. 16 of those were in Newcastle with seven of them being transfers from hospital. Weston County had four ambulance calls that Newcastle ambulance covered and all the other categories were zero. Upton Ambulance had three. Just a couple notes at the bottom there. The classic summer drags event went well, especially for, it was the first time around. We didn't see any notable increase in calls for service or anything like that in relation to the events. Obviously, there was a pretty significant amount of time put into planning and preparation for those events, but nothing bad, you know, that I could see in any way. We are having some difficulty with some of the ordinance enforcement, ordinance compliance stuff on some of the properties in town that are vacant. We're finding out they're owned by people that are not in town or not even in the state and have no records for them, no contact information. So we're trying to work on a way to figure out how to get ahold of these folks to get some compliance from them on their ordinance issues. We granted one just today that when I did some digging and contacted the person that we thought owned the property, they had sold it a year ago to somebody that their address is in Washington. So if the council would like, I can drive to Washington and issue them a notice, but if not, we're going to have to find a different way. And I'll probably speak with attorney Hughes about this and see what our legal means are in getting whatever documentation served to these folks that we need to get to. I didn't want to let the council know I am going to attempt to take vacation next week. I will be in the area, but I have some personal matters to attend to. We'll see how well that goes. Might end up being here the entire week for all that. And the last thing I didn't put on there, we do have two more applications in. One, one of the gentlemen in the wife lives in Upton and the other one lives in Rapid City. He's one of the graduates from Western Dakota Tech. So that, all of our efforts are panning out to some degree. So we will be interviewing those folks here shortly and hopefully we have some new candidates and can get them started down the road. And we do have Mr. Foot's process completed. The only thing we need to do is finalize some sort of contract for him because he's going to be part-time so we can make sure we're not locked into keeping him until we find a full-time person to fill that spot and he's aware of that situation. So we're just going to get that completed and hopefully we can get him to come in for a good next campaign. That's all I think I have for now.
Anybody have any questions for Chief Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Are you at liberty to tell us what sort of drugs are entering our community and being under arrest for?
Primarily, it were. Say this, it sounds ironic, but we are fortunate that it is primarily methamphetamine and marijuana. And when I say fortunate, thankfully, it has not become fentanyl.
Yeah, thank you.
That is extremely lethal. We have encountered fentanyl on several occasions, but by and large, it is, it remains methamphetamine and marijuana. We do deal with certain types of prescription medications, especially in pair-driving cases where it's coupled with alcohol and it has a significant magnifying effect on impairment, depending on what type of prescription medication it is, what category of drug that it's in. If it's in the depressing category of drugs, it significantly affects, it significantly worsens the effects of impairment when coupled with alcohol. So we do deal with a lot of that type of stuff, but as far as the illicit street drugs, at this point, it's still methamphetamine and marijuana, so.
Thank you. That's good news, actually, in a way.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to say, but it could certainly be worse.
Hearing on, we'll move on to, thanks, Chief. Moving on to item number two, Attorney Double Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I have a lease in front of me. This was actually the prior sale that I had on WIGIF. So this is not entirely correct. I think what I'll do is I'll have this, I'll get this to Stacy properly in the next few days with the correct verdict and have the council be able to look at this lease agreement. It basically just entails the releasing of, I believe it's Lot 10, over by Leonard and Linda Cash's place, by Cash Ceramics, for the pocket park. They apparently mutually agreed that the payment for that lease would be a dollar a year. I believe the term of the lease would be something in that range. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? So I, just to be cautious so we're not citing a lease agreement that favors less over more than less seeing or is mutually beneficial, I'd ask that the council probably table this for the next meeting.
Do we have a motion to table Pocket Park Lease, Leonard, Linda, Cash? Thank you, second. We have a motion properly seconded. It's a tabled motion, so if discussion required, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, double. Was there anything further?
Yes, so I am tentatively right now and I'll likely not going to be here at the next meeting. If there's anything you need from me during that time period, just let me know. I think as far as the water contract amendments and the purchase agreement and the easement that we have, I think we should have those out by the end of the meeting. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions to Attorney Double Hughes? Hearing on, we'll move on to item number three, Clerk Treasurer Stacy Haggerty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is I sent out an email in regards to the garbage fund income, expenses, pretty much comparing when the city ran the land bill to currently when the city is not running the land bill. Councilman Voss, did that answer your questions in terms of income and things of that nature?
I'm going to tell you, it looks like a very thorough report and I have not gotten through it, but yes, it disappears that it's going to answer once I get it read and not through it. Looks good, Stacy. Thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome. Did anybody else have any questions on that?
Does anybody have any further questions for Clerk Treasurer Stacy Haggerty? Hearing on, we'll move on. Thank you, Stacy. Move on to item number four, Public Works Supervisor Greg Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item, Landco Lumber Mediation Project. At our last update meeting, we decided to set the dates for the bidding, so we're preparing all the bidding documents. We're looking at September, October timeframe, to do the bidding for that one. We have the backyard park banner ordered, one has a refire on it, so it's up, it'll be here hopefully in the next 30, 45 days. We got the Cedar Street signs in today and they went up, so they're changed. Spelled correctly. Thank you. We had two leaks this last week, or last couple of weeks. One, 1911 West Main Street, this one's been a bit of a problem for quite some time. It is on the shortlist, it is on our cabinet records plan, so it was certainly difficult to deal with, with the mining utilities we were having to work around and stuff we had. The second one has a lot of history to it. The second one is a repair clamp failed on spruce and block. Actually put this one in 20 years and seven months to date prior to the failures. That was a, that was a long time when we did the first one. We reviewed the Deckers Market... Uh, we reviewed the Deckers Market mystery water again and it's drying up. So we're assuming it's some kind of groundwater, but we'll keep an eye on it. Today, when we were there, there was no standing water anywhere, it was moist, ground was moist, but nothing. My final item, Justin King has completed the required four month probationary period. I recommend Justin King for a fifty cent raise for completing the probationary period effective June July first.
Would the counter, or council entertain a motion to provide, uh, four month king with a fifty cent raise appropriated back to-
July first.
July first?
No, no, I move that this council approved Justin's raise to back to July first, fifty cents.
Second. Do we have a motion properly seconded? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, council, that's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions for Public Works Supervisor Stone?
One, um, kind of relating back, you know, when I read the letters from Linda Hunt for the trade and looking through the order of the lease. This question, I guess, we had several years ago, every time I go camping, going down through Highland, you know, didn't really see any of the ordinance who was responsible for trades that were coming over or were we able to see try to maintain overhang in into, into the streets and how they came down? I know what, off the corner of Cascade and Highland, there are trains that are moving over the middle of that and, and I go through there with my camper, I've got a dog shoe there because it will darn near bite off my ears and make it down.
Do you know, spokesman, do you know how tall your camper is?
Uh, it's probably a little close to, don't matter to me, it's under the thirteen, that's required.
Um, yes, once you ever go through, typically you're at the four, school starts, uh, we turn these up, we give them buses. We can definitely look at it. Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-five, that's the ordinance which, yes, some did not, it was probably a recant, so that's where we'll find where the responsibilities are for us versus the citizens. So, and there are some people on, they do not want to stretch the trees. We request they get their, their, uh, issues.
And I can understand that, you know, especially if someone is going there and, and basically to kill the tree.
Well, that's why we have certified hours.
There's something that this brother, you know, it has been back in my mind every year. And it's like, okay, who's responsible for this? Is it the homeowner that tried to get this cleared up? Is it just seem like it's worse, worse coming down into the middle of the street? And then when this came up, it was like, all right, now this might be a good time to ask the question.
And I'll have a better report for you, Mike. Thanks, Councilman.
Okay. All right, thanks, that's all I have.
Thanks so much for giving those science procedures for you, and that, that answered my question right away, so I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any further questions for Public Works Supervisor Stone?
Mr. Stone, were you able to talk with the DOT about the post that needed for the-
Two makes new three serves and set up for-
You didn't have an opportunity, okay.
Okay, if there's no further questions, the Public Works Supervisor will go ahead and move on to claims against the city dated July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve the claim?
No, no, I move that this August body supply all of his repairs and suppliers with the recompense, we have to send the city treasury up with the case.
Uh, do we have a second? We have a motion properly seconded, pay the bills, uh, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Uh, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion properly seconded to adjourn, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries where you adjourn the eight and P O.